No, no.
I'll go wherever. I'm gonna move back. Push me where you want me.
All right. There's more red steaks or utensils napkins?
Let me have it.
The good news is that it's not summer.
How are you? Are you doing so well?
We never can catch up.
No, we just rebuilt it about two years ago. Do we have a backup pump? The problem is the motor, we have a problem. The motor is fine. I don't remember. Maybe a burger? I think a burger. Burger. Good choice.
I got the burger too, and I'm like, it's gonna be messy, it'll be all over, watch out. I should've got salad, maybe look professional. One has all of his hair, I would've thought you were pulling your hair out.
Like housewife minimize.
We're all friends here.
If everyone will take their seats, our meeting has begun for the public portion here. So, welcome, welcome to our budget kickoff. I'd like to thank, I guess Brittany's not in here, but thank her for getting our dinner for all of us. And hopefully our food isn't cold. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right, so we're going to get started here this Thursday, February 22nd, 2024, here in the Linden City Chambers. And for those that are listening online or watching, this is a public meeting to address our, have a work session with our budget kickoff for our next annual year. So, I'll be conducting here just for a bit and then turn the time over to staff. But first, we'll start with a call to order and a roll call. So, I'll just start here on my right.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, Keith Bateman present.
Mike Florence.
Juan Garrido present.
Van Broderick present.
Jake Hoyt present.
Chase Adams present.
Kristen Aaron present.
Adam Cowie not present. Sorry. Brian Hawes present.
Cole Hooley present.
Steve Stewart present.
Orlando Ruiz present.
Lincoln Jacobs present.
All right, wonderful, thank you, everybody. And then really quickly, before we get started, we just have a resident here. Before I turn the time over to Adam Cowie, our administrator, Denny Barnorth, if you want to come up, he wanted to say something really quick.
Is this where Adam was sitting?
Yeah.
Take it.
Sit in the big man's chair there.
I just wanted to express a little bit of appreciation for Linden City. To do that, I gotta back up just a little bit. When I was eight years old, there was a catastrophic event in our family and I had to go to work. As an eight-year-old, you don't think that you're doing, well, you thought you were doing much, but you're really not doing much. And I was cleaning tools and that for a contractor. And that's how I started my career. And at eighteen, I took out my first contractor license. And four-seeded past that. As we're all aware, Friday night, there was a major chaotic water issue in our city. And I had got a phone call at about five o'clock from Zach Daly. And he had said, there's just some leaks, we're not sure what's going on. Can you grab some equipment and come help us? I was going to a dinner. I had a nineteen-year-old son standing there and he says, we can handle this. And they proceeded to mobilize dump trucks and Mini-Xs to head over to help out. The first hole that we encountered was across from the cannery. And that was the very first one we started on. If any of you have ever done these, as Juan knows, and some of you, it usually takes you eight, between six to eight to ten hours on one hole. With the magnitude of holes that we had, leaks, there was three contractors and then the city workers out on these. We ended up doing five, six, six of the holes, our crew alone, through the night. And as it got perpetuated going down, we thought we'd be, I'd be there till 3:00 AM. I sent my guys home, which are my boys, at five o'clock the next, the next day. And they worked through the night. It was twenty-six degrees at one point, standing in a foot of water. We called my wife out at, I think, ten to get sheets to put on our personal trucks. Because after the very first hole, we were completely inundated with mud and muck and mire. I just give you that little synopsis of where it went. And then Juan was getting parts, and so was Zach Daly. And obviously, the city workers were too. I wasn't privy to the information of the other contractors, but I know what we had. And I had three of our personal trucks onsite with two dump trucks and a Mini-X. And we didn't have all the tools we needed. And these guys were unbelievably helpful in helping this city get to where it is back today. And in doing so, I don't think there's enough recognition you can give Zach Daly or Juan. And so, I had asked if I could come and speak for just a minute. One of the things I learned at a young age is you never know who's watching you. And between my church activities to business and so forth, I've always told everybody, you never know who's watching you. And Juan, you never know who's watching you. As I'm standing in a Mini-X, digging, slashing mud, Juan noticed that my boys didn't have flashlights. So, he ran and grabbed a whole bunch of these. This is the last one I'm gonna return to you. And then, there's just another little present in here for you, I'd like to give you. But this city owes you a thank you. I don't think anybody can understand, when you don't have water, it's very interesting how the public see it. And they think you can just turn a faucet and there's water. They don't understand the ramifications of, what was there, eighteen leaks? And we would seal one off, and three feet down that pipe, water takes the least resistance, right? And it would pop up another one. And then you're digging in mud, another three feet, and trying to fix another one. And it just kept redundantly having another leak after another leak. Juan came up at 3:00 AM and said, you have it in you for another one? And the other part of-
And then he says, boys, what do you think? And then he says, we're no quitters.
Their contractors had stopped. They had thrown in the towel on a couple and they just couldn't physically do anymore. I don't, I don't think it was me, I think it was the city guys and it was my boys. There were some interesting parts on that that I didn't know until yesterday. And I'm a terrible father, but one of my boys, it was his anniversary. And I'd called him and he's like, we're at dinner. And I'm like, okay. And he didn't say a word. He just says, I'll be there when we're done eating. And it was his anniversary. The other one was, had a temple calling and he didn't make it the next morning. But, but the other one, the nineteen-year-old, had had a date and was leaving to go. And to get a nineteen-year-old out of a date with a girl, and yeah, so, they're pretty good kids, a lot better than I am. But that's all I wanted to say and thank, thank you. And I'm proud to be a Linden resident and you guys are awesome.
Absolutely. Thank you.
This is for you, so. Don't ever lose this guy. He's the only Public Works Director I've ever seen jump in a trench and just keep saying, what can we do to help? I have, in all the years, what, thirty-five, forty years I've done this, I've never had a Public Works Director do that. So, that's, that's a huge, not saying that I'm much, but most of our works in Salt Lake City, but with, with a hundred and twenty employees, I've never seen a Public Works Director do that. Thank you, Dennis. Thanks, guys.
Can't say enough, can't say enough. And thank you, Denny, for being, jumping in. Moment of sadness.
It really was a whole team effort. It was, the guys that didn't get out of the trench, they were just shoveling and timing bolts and cutting pipes.
Example, and that's amazing, thank you. All right. We'll move on then to our item of business tonight, our 2024-25 fiscal year budget planning. So, I'll turn this over to Adam Cowie.
Yeah, Juan, is there anything else? Any updates or issues that you want to cover on that one or outage? Sorry, before we jump into this. Or questions by the council members?
So, we have, we have water being supplied at a good pressure, good flows. In that lower zone, we have nine pressure-reducing valves. And we were everywhere in a straight line from 700 North. On the southwest corner of the intersection between Seventh North and State Street, there is a pressure-reducing valve. If you draw a straight line all the way to just east of the Kia dealership, by Comcast Building, there's another PRV. So, that is pretty much a contour line where everything is there. And those PRVs sit at a certain elevation to maintain the pressure in the upper zone and on the lower zone. We are currently running just with three PRVs. We are in the process of rebuilding or replacing three of the other primary PRVs. And that's gonna take us a little while, but we feel confident that, that we will not have an issue with, with those other PRVs. So, but we are on a emergency or urgency to get those, to get those done. If it wasn't bad news enough, I just lost, we just lost well number four. Something mechanical on the shaft is, went wrong. The good news is that it's not summertime. If it was summertime, we would not be able to keep up with the other three remaining wells to provide water for, for the city. So, it happened at a, if you're gonna say a good time, it's a good time to rebuild and fix that well. And there's always something in Public Works. There is always something with the sewer. It's our infrastructure ages. We have streets, sidewalks, lights, all of the above. But we have a really good crew of guys that take a lot of pride and ownership in what they do and will, will, will keep going. You know, there's one foot in front of the other.
With those eighteen leaks, how many do you feel were attributed to aging pipes versus the PRV?
So, a hundred percent is aging valves, aging parts. Because of the holes that we were finding, is completely corroded holes that, that develop with, with age. Some of the stuff we're finding are the, if you have a valve, an isolation valve, that's it, you know, you see about four in every intersection, you see those concrete colors. There is a valve underneath there. So, if you can imagine how many intersections we have, times four, that's about how many isolation valves we have. So, some of these valves, the bolts that hold the top part of the valve completely deteriorated. They were rusted out and the pressure just kind of blew the tops off. The pressure regulator, it's gonna find the weakest spot. If we are trying to relieve pressure of two hundred PSI plus, it's gonna find a weak, a weak spot. And we usually find them here and there through the year. But I guess with this pressure change, we found them, all the, all the future leaks that are gonna happen in the next six months.
What was the event metabolism that started it?
Started with a water hammer.
So, we had a pipe break in the 400 North and about 2,400 West. There by Son Rock and I think is the Mark Weldon Properties. This pipe is a large, large pipe and it, some defect, it split right down the middle. So, usually you have a hole, but in this case, there was a split and the pipe split seventeen feet.
And it was underground?
It was underground.
What kind of pipe?
It's a twelve-inch PVC pipe. After that happened, a lot of the water is just kind of flowing out that pipe. And the PRVs work in, in the, one at a time, right? So, if there's too much flow needed, this PRV is opening and this is, I can't keep up with the demand. So, another one opens, another one opens. And pretty soon, all nine PRVs are working together. And then we're trying to shut the water off. When we shut the water off, one of the PRVs did not close accordingly, it stayed open. And then that's when it started. That's what, to the best of our conclusions, that after we started getting more and more and more, went to the office, started looking at the tanks, started looking at pressures. And at that point, we told, we decided, say, you know what, it's a, we have high pressure somewhere. So, we decided to close every PRV to first, catch up with, with the amount of leaks we had to fix. And second, we couldn't keep enough water up in the tanks. So, then we started filling up, at least keeping everybody in water on the upper zones. And then we had to deal with the, with the lower zones. And-
Well, those PRVs, do you replace the entire PRV or just those bolts that are holding that cap on?
So, two different things. The cap that I'm telling you about is the isolation valves. When we have a leak in a, on a street, we close here, we close here, and we isolate that piece. The PRV is controlling the water to the entire, to an entire zone. So, this one sit in a vault. And it has, kind of like your, it has a spring and a diaphragm, right? So, when the water is coming this way, it's saying, I'm gonna start building pressure. And when it gets to a certain pressure, the spring and the pressure of the water equalize and it shuts the port, keeping water from going. When, when there is demand and the pressure drops, that spring releases, lets more water in. So, those sit in a vault and they are made out of like a cast steel. The new technology is stainless steel, which is harder than the cast and absorbs better wear. Or even some that are coated with ceramics. So, we're looking at, the ceramics is, we'll, we'll look at the pricing and the life and the warranty on them. And we'll start, but we already have the, the people from the two companies that provide PRVs coming, coming next week to, to look at them and give us an estimate. Once we get that, we'll probably get that company to come and do the installation and the setting up of it. And just get going, because we have a lot of other projects for, for our crews to, to keep going.
Appreciate it. Hope you're getting some sleep.
It was tough. Matt Winward, after everything was done, we had to fill the system very slowly. And I told him, when, when can we start sending people home? He says, well, I think we're, we're caught up with the leaks. Send them home, I'll stay behind and fill up the, fill up the system. So, the last guy, then he went home at five and then we had some at 6:30, some, some at 8:30. And then Matt stayed through the night again till three in the morning. His wife came over to, to check on him. And he says, well, I'm gonna take a little nap. Wake me up if this happens on my phone or if you see something here. So, she was the watch. And after a couple hours, he says, I can't sleep, you know, so, so he went right back. But we ended up sending Matt to dinner with his wife to, to make up for, for all the troubles he went through. But very dedicated, there was a lot of exhaustion. I was exhausted mentally. And I, on my way home, I lost it. I was like, Adam says, what else can we do for you? I says, just pray, Adam. Pray that we can get over this and we're gonna get on top of things and provide the water. It worked, so, thank you for your prayers.
Do we have an agreement with our third-party contractors that help? How does that get worked out? Is that as some, they just bill us?
They just charge, for example, where this was a, overtime, they charge, this is standard to do a fifty percent over their, their cost. And we are, one of the bills I got today was Jared-
College?
And he helped us fix three leaks. His bill is about thirteen thousand. Kevin Filon helped us with one, one leak on 100 South. His was about six thousand. So, Danny was the one that stayed there the longest and then he came right back the following day, well, following Tuesday, and started doing all the concrete work on Geneva Road so we can get the state, you know, state road, which is Geneva Road, get it paved. And so, I'm assuming it's gonna be, yeah, the fifty, fifty thousand bucks just from contractors.
Sure.
We used a lot of parts, we used a lot of clamps. We ended up, we ran out of road base to backfill trenches at the, at the yard. I mean, we usually have enough for about four water leaks. But we ran out of material, so I ended up having to take the loader. And I, and I took this on myself, because if I send somebody to go load material on Canal Drive and we have the backup alarm on the loader, we have the working lights on it. So, I says, well, we probably, somebody's gonna come out and I'm gonna have to, to talk to this resident. But luckily, everybody was sound asleep. We didn't wake anybody up, but we had to come and steal every pile of road base that our contractors doing the work in Canal Drive had stockpiled. We ended up stealing every little bit of, of road base from them. And, and then on Saturday, when we had no, no gravel pits are open, Kevin Filon came and helped us. And he actually has quite a, quite a big yard there in American Fork and he had some extra road base. So, I told him, I'm taking that. Well, we wouldn't got it, it's cheaper if we, but we had to pull in the dump truck for fourteen hours. I mean, this is, am I legal to still be in a dump truck? He says, well, get out, take, you know, take a walk, fifteen minutes. And he's always, makes sure we're, we're in the, with the rules. He says, this is an emergency and so, but no injuries. Everybody helped out and-
Glad you had those stockpiles on Canal Drive. You start telling the story. I'm gonna be the one that's gonna, I thought you were gonna say, break into the gravel pit. I wanna be able to explain, but that was better.
Yeah, my next call was Orem City, they have a huge pile.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I don't wanna do it again.
I mean, I'll probably just follow up with you, maybe Adam. I'm, so you don't need to have an answer, but I'm curious what we will do differently moving forward that we learn from this. You know, what it, what it, vulnerabilities it exposed? Or maybe it's nothing and it's just aging infrastructure. But I'm kind of curious, what will be different in the future because of what we learned this round?
Better records of what, when things are being, be proactive instead of reactive. And that's what we've been trying to do. I mean, we, we started with, we were replacing isolation valves. We rebuilt every, every well. The past couple of years, unfortunately, that one went down. But we, as far, as far as being neglected, it's not neglected, it's just some mechanical failure.
Yeah.
And after you are proactive and, and take those steps to, to stay ahead, things are still gonna, gonna, gonna go wrong. We were replacing fire hydrants, we're replacing water mains.
Kind of go along with that a little bit. A year ago, as you're going through this budget process, you could not have imagined that this would happen. How do you kind of plan for the unexpected? As we go through this process, this will help me, because I'm looking at all this information and numbers and it's just overwhelming. Next year, I'll be just right on it. Right? But I'm just curious how you kind of plan for that unexpected event?
We, for unexpected events, it's unexpected and we just have to react. We are prepared with, with a good equipment. Luckily, there wasn't a lot of people on vacation. This could've hit in Thanksgiving or when people are on vacation. I had an event in, in Springville when I was managing the sewer plant that this, this main piece of equipment broke down between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So, we actually had to do the work manually around the clock. So, you plan, you hope for the, for the best and, and hope, hopefully you're geared up. We have enough stockpiles of spare parts to do clamp repairs, to have good equipment and keep our employees happy and, and always willing to, to help. You know, there is not, when I, when I got to Linden, there was a culture of, people were not happy with their, with their jobs. You know, we didn't have enough people, we don't have enough tools. I think we, we turned the, turned the corner with keeping great employees, keeping them, keeping them happy, working with them with flexibility, you know. Money, we cannot give them all the money in the world, but we're, we have pretty flexible schedule, pretty nice working environment. That's, that's the best thing, happy employees and, and equipment and-
And from a budget standpoint, I imagine we'll see an amendment come through for the expenses that were above and beyond our, our budgeted.
More likely.
Hard to like question too. Thanks for that clarification.
Using fund balance, which is a savings.
Okay. And that's, that's what I was trying to get to was just, it's not in your budget. So, what happens from there when something like this and you're just now getting the-
We'll go over, over that document that I put there. But luckily, we have good, good reserves, good funds there to, to respond to something like this.
Public Works has really worked hard to move out of reactionary stage, and this one was, and to be more proactive. Where more and more work is being done to have spare parts, to have materials. But it takes years and years to do that and to have the funds to do it. And so, when you see an increase, when we vote on an increase to the utility bills, that's where it's going.
Well, I think the three and two ran for our seats. We spent a lot of time with Juan and we got to see all of that and, you know, see how much he's done to, to kind of pull us into the 21st century.
He's brought in great technology, but he's also very forward-thinking. You know, oh, we need to take out these trees because we just, you know, did a work order to remove trees that could cause root problems down the road. I mean, he's trying to see, catch those things, like you said, proactively, so thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Tuesday, we all got together Tuesday morning and, and one of the items that came up, Juan hasn't mentioned, is, is looking at installing some pressure relief blowoffs on the lower end of town. I don't think you mentioned that yet.
No, so, our pressure relief, unfortunately, this time, where they're all pipes. Moving forward. That's what, that's what happens. Have to find the pressure relief. So, what I'm, we're looking at doing is, at the bottom of every zone, have a strategically-placed pressure relief valve. So, if we do have something that exceeds the, the amount, then we'll pop out a relief valve at the bottom instead of having to hammer back and come out through the, through a relief valve that is at the top of the, top of the line. That's also part of the-
Part of, to your question, Cole, what are we gonna do to prevent this? That would be part of it. Thank you, Juan. I appreciate you reviewing that again. And in tonight's budget is actually, as he goes through his department requests, as we've looked for the last several years for a redundant well. And unfortunate timing that we're talking about that tonight. But there are mechanical features of our city. And pumps go down or something breaks and that redundancy is important. So, that's one of the items that we'll be talking about later tonight. Christine, you wanna throw us through the budget calendar?
All right. Can you bring the budget calendar up for this? Already? All right. So, we started the process by handing out budget requests to the department heads. And so, as they're working on those, then we have this kickoff meeting and talk about the big picture things and get direction from council in areas that's needed or just give you an update on what we're looking at this year. And then the department heads will submit their budget requests by March 1st, so one week from tomorrow. And then Chase and I will start entering them into our spreadsheets and, and we'll get a tentative budget completed and- And present that to city council on March eighteenth. And then we'll work to refine those, the tentative budget by meeting with the department heads. And discussing the needs in more detail. Some, and that doesn't always mean things get taken off. Sometimes having all of us together will be like, oh, did you take this into account? And then things get added in. So it's just, we're just all trying to work together. And then on April fifteenth, for city council meeting, we will discuss the ten, the proposed budget, the, the first draft of it. And, and this is where we would just like to have a good work session with the city council, get lots of feedback, lots of questions. Make any big changes that need to be made. This is the, the down and dirty meeting. And, and so then after that, then we work to finalize the proposed budget. And then we present that on May sixth in city council. And any feedback that we get at that meeting, we use and put the final budget together. And then we'll present that on June third. So the state says that it needs to be done by June twenty second, and so in years past, we've done the second meeting in June. But last year I had a vacation and this year I have a calling that's making me go to camp. So I will be gone on the seventeenth for that meeting, so we're gonna do it on the third. So when we do the, pass the final budget that early, we don't have the certified tax rate from the county yet. So the property tax revenue is estimated, the tax rate isn't, isn't available for us to approve that, the exact number. Last year, we just said we're going to approve whatever the county tells us. So if we.
Everyone, yeah, and everyone get your taxes done before it, that night.
On that, that highlighted yellow April fifteenth date, that's really the date we want you as council members to, to have scoured through the budget. The information that we've given you ahead of time and, and bring things to us that night. In subsequent meetings, we're, we're getting tighter and tighter on time and just making little tweaks. But big changes is really difficult for us to amend beyond that. And so, yeah, if there's any, any projects or expenditures that you have questions about or concerns. Or you wanna put money more here or there, let us know those, those requests, those desires as soon as possible. Okay, great. Thanks, Kristen. I am just gonna give you a quick update on our sales tax revenues. You've seen this graph before and this year we are projecting six point three million as estimated revenue off of sales tax in our budget. We had some volatility, as I shared in a, in a prior city council meeting. Sales tax is pretty cyclical. There's an up and down every year on, on those revenues and each month is, is pretty drastic. If you look at this, this chart on the screen there, it's the same one in your packet. The red line is the trend line, so that each up and down in the red is basically a year cycle. The blue line is month to month. And so what's unique about the last couple of years, twenty twenty one, twenty two, twenty three. The spread between those months has gotten more dramatic and so the highs and lows are farther apart. And so that's a little bit, little bit hard to know where we're headed on things. We did have this, out of the last ten months or so, we've had seven or eight of those were less money than we had received in the prior year. But it is still a, a really positive outlook. We've had a, a general uptick again. Still at or near the highest amount of sales tax revenue that we've ever had. And so something we're carefully watching and, and we, we track month to month, so. On property tax, we were estimating this year in our budget to receive about two point six million. I include it in here. This is a, a ta, a graph that shows when that property tax comes into the city. The majority of those taxes are paid in November, and so that's the blue line on those graphs is when we're receiving the majority of our funds. And so in really tight years, a decade ago during the Great Recession, that's been more than a decade ago now, huh? During that Great Recession, funds were so tight that we were looking forward to, how do we bridge the gap for a couple of months until we get more revenue from property tax? And it was that tight where we were looking towards that November month to actually have revenue, looking towards that November month to actually have revenue to make bigger projects be completed, so. But fortunately, we're, we're at a better financial position right now, so. The park tax, we're estimated to receive in, well, in our budget, we estimated nine hundred and forty five thousand this year. And I just wanted to just quickly review with you for those that are, that are newer. You know what? I jumped a slide and I'll come back to it. So while I'm still on the park tax. You know what? I didn't have a slide on that. I'm sorry. I apologize. So in, in this, in this paperwork there on that, I actually listed the percentage of, the split of the percentage of those funds and where we're allocating those. And that is something that we've brought forward periodically to the city council. Just a, a year or so ago in March of twenty three, we brought forward a recommended change and the council approved these percentages. So this is where that nine hundred and forty five thousand is being allocated according to those percentages. Any questions on that?
I do have a quick question. So we just had the Fifth Fifth enacted, so our sales tax rate is now seven point four five percent. Is the Fifth Fifth funding going to come just with the same revenue chunk of sales tax? Or is it going to come as like a separate road funding, transportation funding tranche?
That comes as, as, basically comes in as Class C road funding that we can only use for those purposes.
So it will come in, it'll come separately. So is that something that you're anticipating an estimate here for?
Off the top of my head, the League of Cities and Towns actually prepared an estimate and sent one out. And it was between two and three hundred thousand is what I thought, I remember on that. And so that would go towards our additional road funding.
All right.
Yeah. Let's see, on some utility charges, I am gonna go backwards here for a second and talk a little bit more about property tax before we get to that. In your packet was this, this chart that has the green, the green bar chart there that shows our certified tax rate. And so Kristen mentioned this earlier. This is the rate the county looks at and says, in order for a city to maintain the same revenue from property tax. We're gonna change the rate either up or down depending on values, depending on growth in your community.
It, it shouldn't account for growth. So growth is added on, the, this, it just takes, says. As home values like increase, they don't want our revenue to increase because of it, so they'll decrease our tax rate.
We do get an increase from the growth in our community, so if there's new, new buildings, new properties developed, then we receive that increase. But for existing properties, the theory is that Linden would, unless we go through a truth and taxation hearing and raise our property tax rate. The theory is that we maintain the same revenue. And so what I wanted to show to you, this is a chart that I, I've shown to others in the past. This, this was a former city council member's home that had been in the home for a long time. And it, it had been here since at least nineteen ninety three is when we started tracking their property tax payments. What I wanna bring your attention to is the blue line, that's like the third line from the bottom, that is our Linden City property tax. So if you look at the property value on this individual home, their value has tripled. But our amount that we receive in property tax for Linden City has stayed pretty constant through all of those, what is that, thirty, thirty years plus, so.
And, and that's intentional from the county's intervention?
Right. So that certified tax rate, the rate that you see fluctuating up above, it, it would go down if the property value goes up. And so that we maintain the same revenue essentially. And they do a calculation, a massive calculations to determine that citywide. And so there is, if you look at this individual's property tax bills over those years, there's a, a little difference. I mean, it's within fifty to sixty dollars though of staying constant. And so back in nineteen ninety three, we were receiving approximately three hundred dollars from this household. And then today, we are still receiving approximately three hundred dollars from this household, even though we've grown dramatically in the city. And the inflation is significantly different. And so our buying power with that three hundred dollars is not the same as it was in nineteen ninety three, as you guys all know. Just bringing that to your attention and, and property tax as a portion of the pie of our entire budget has, has reduced. Even though we're seeing property tax revenues increase because of new growth in the community. Our portion of the total budget pie that is property tax is shrinking year to year. So we're more dependent on other funding sources than we have been on property tax in the past.
Pretty obvious on the graph that when people complain, they explain it's the Alpine School District.
Absolutely it is. Yeah. You look at the red line and the top blue line, it's a, a conglomeration of all of them and the old lines follow each other really, really well. So the only time, to my knowledge, in this graph, so that the city adopted a property tax increase, Linden, was in two thousand nine. And so if you look at that two thousand eight and nine year, there was a little bump where it went up just slightly. That was a property tax increase that was approved by the city during that Great Recession time. And that is the only one that we have ever done.
And there's been a lot of sister communities that have done a hold the tax rate initiative where they're not increasing property taxes. But that, that ratcheting down that the county does of the effective rate, let's say it could go from eleven point nine. Then it's gonna ratchet down to eleven point four the next year based on looking at those values and trying to keep the revenue neutral. So Alpine, a whole bunch of cities, Alpine last year did a hold the rate. So basically they legislated, they weren't increasing, but they're gonna make sure their effective rate stayed static. And Alpine School District has done that several times as well. And there's actually right now a bill, one or two bills that are trying to make any property tax issue become a voter initiative right now. I don't know how they're gonna do, if they're gonna get out on the floor, but Bill like three fifty four would try to make. So in the past legislative bodies could determine, let's do, you know, hold the rate. So we'll see where that goes in the legislature.
Technically, holding the rate is still an increase if the property value is going up.
Exactly. They'll have an increase in what, what they pay.
Yeah.
Their portion to that entity, that taxing entity, but.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay.
On utility charges, just really quick, I wanted to reshare, this is a, an excerpt out of our. State of the City report that we send out every year, shows where we're at in comparison to property taxes. This is as of last year and then has some charts and graphs there on our comparisons with other cities and then our budget there. This year in our utilities, we did have here a, a chart that we wanna run through with recommended increases. And Juan, I'll probably turn this over to you if you wanna share your, your spreadsheets.
Yeah, so I printed out for you two big papers. They're double printed, so same on paper. The first one, after the streets map, is our water utility. The black line represents the cash on hand. The black line indicates the cash on hand. The red line at the bottom, the dotted line, it's what we wanna keep as reserves. That represents thirty percent of our revenue. And then the brown bar represents our sale of a utility, our base charge. And our orange represents the water usage charge. So the way the game is played, you wanna have the brown pay for the blue and the orange pay for the green. Because we have quite a bit of cash on hand, we are recommending a very small, just inflationary rate, rate increase to the water base. And then because we have a bigger deficit between the orange to cover the green, we're recommending. The rates stay at three percent, go three percent, but then the following years, you can see that the, the usage charge goes to, to a five percent to try to, to catch up those, those lines. When we head towards twenty, twenty thirty two, twenty thirty three, you can see that our rate now it dropped it down to one percent. Because we have plenty of cash and we were able to accomplish a lot of the, the, the projects. What, what fills out the, the green part of it, it's capital projects, which is wells, tanks, water line replacements. As we get those from our master plan for growth in the next ten years is our master plan. And then also deficiencies that my crew brings to me and say, hey, we need to, for example, we need to replace the line on Geneva Road. I don't have the numbers exactly of Geneva Road, so the Geneva Road improvements, if we go to replace the whole water line, it's not in this chart. But you can see that in twenty four, twenty twenty five, our cash flow is way above that green. Am I making sense in all this? Do you see it? Okay. On the sewer, which is the next page, just right below that one. Same, same, same thing. The brown pays for the blue, the orange pays for the green. In twenty twenty five, that big spike that you see there, it's a, Orange City is trying to do a twenty year rehabilitation project for, for the sewer plant. Also, that plant was built in the nineteen fifties and it's getting to, to the end of life in quite a few of their processes. So they divided in, in four phases and we will be hitting the, the first one here in twenty twenty five. Adam and I have a meeting with them.
A week or two.
First week in March, or the second week in March, one of those days. So we can go talk to their administrator and public works director on what that looks like for financing. But, so we don't get caught underfunded, we're proposing that heavier increase. We can compound the, the rates moving forward. If we, if we delay, the rate increases, towards the end we have a higher hill to climb. So you can see that the, the cash flow, that black line stays just not as, as healthy as the one in the water. But it stays above and we do not dip below, below the red dotted line. But that's the, that's the increases. I think Kristen put that change in, in grades for sewer, which is the more, more drastic one. We're kind of increasing a little bit of our, what is that, a dollar seventy five? A dollar seventy five cents from twenty four to twenty five.
So those are the rates, yes. And then at the, at the bottom, the very, the variance from the previous years, a total change.
At the bottom of the.
In all of those utilities. And so this is assuming, using eight thousand gallons a month on a one inch culinary water meter in like zones two or three. And they have PI, which affects the sewer, how the sewer is built.
So we're looking at a five dollars and forty four cents increase per month for the next.
Per year.
No, sorry. It's a per month. All of those are per month amounts. So like the base rate is per month.
No, no. Oh, it's five forty four per month.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, the bigger one there is our, our sewer, which represents why to pay for the Orem, Orem improvements to the plant. And that's sadly what, what we have to do. Adam can tell you a little more about what Payson charges on those utility rates. Payson is, is bonding to get a new plant built. Spanish Fork is already in the process of building. Salem, all those people are way above, what do you say, fifty dollars a month on their, their sewer?
Yeah, in the last two years, it's gone up to about forty dollars more. Yeah, in the last two years, it's gone up to about forty dollars more than it was just a couple of years ago.
So we are on the low end of those increases because Orem was kind of proactive in the, in the early stages of regulations where they got ahead and to meet this nutrient and removal for Utah Lake. But we still have to still replace some of the component, bigger, bigger components in, in Orem.
We had a former council member, Daryl, asked a couple of years ago at this meeting, when, when will we not be charging a utility rate increase? And I think the answer is I don't see that happening. I, I think every year for this foreseeable future, we will have a recommended increase in order to cover our current costs and our needs for replacement of our facilities and so.
One of the things I've tried to remember, if we budget perfectly, the next year we would have to increase three percent just to break even. That didn't mean you, you got better. It just means you broke even just because of that's how much the cost increases are. And I think we follow that pretty well unless our inflation is way high and then you, you'd be losing ground on that three percent sometimes.
We are, we are making improvements in the, in the sewer system. We pay, every time we have a big rainfall, we have so much water coming into, into our system through, through broken pipes underground, through surface water going into this, into the manholes. And I'm suspecting that we also have some people that have basements that have high groundwater. And when their sump pumps kick on, rather than pumping it to the outside, they're pumping it into the sewer system. So we see these big spikes and the, and the water we send to Orem. And we pay them to treat, every million gallons of sewage, we, we pay them. So in the last year, I think our budget was about five hundred thousand dollars to, to pay to Orem for treatment. I think this year, we're going to be in the five forty-five, five seventy, just to make up for those big storms we're, we're getting. We are able to tell in our, through our SCADA system, when we get those peaks in, in the flow. What that doesn't tell, tell me is where that water is coming in. So we're investing or spending some money with this company that is very innovative too. It's the people that come and do our inspections with acoustic waves through the manholes. They now have some tools that they can deploy hundreds of flow meters in different sections of the city where we suspect infiltration. And then when we get those rain events, we can actually track which basin is putting the most water in the system and then we'll be able to, to track it. So we're, we're looking at technology to, to help us make, make, identify those places and, and then start attacking those. We, we're, we're budgeting about four hundred thousand dollars a year in the sewer system to, to reline pipes that, that we know have a lot of cracks and getting water in and just find, find those, those places where the water is getting in. But we are trying to make our system better and, and try to not spend so much here because we have to spend it over here. There's always, there's always a place for the money to go.
Adam, relative to Daryl's comment, as cost of living increases, I pay more for my candy, my chocolate candy. I would expect to pay more for my utility, at least that's the way I, I think. Are you aware of cities that, oh no, we're not going to increase as life gets more expensive? They don't? Linden City has done that years ago. And so, yeah.
Other cities have done it and then they come, like, in a couple of years, they come with a big increase.
You may have heard a couple of years ago, PG had a fifteen or twenty dollar per month jump and because they hadn't made substantial increases over several years. And so that does occur.
But they end up having to pay.
At, at some point, that catches up to them. And, and it's an infrastructure issue where we're not keeping up with operations and, and replacement. And so.
How often do you get complaints, citizens calling because they're frustrated that their rates go up?
Occasionally.
You'll probably get it.
You're going to get it more than they are.
Well, I have, I have, I have some people that chat with me.
So it's, it's important to understand where the money's going and how it's being used to, to explain that. We took a tour of the Orem sewage treatment plant not too long ago and seeing some of the things they're doing for the improvements. I'm nutty, but I thought it was fascinating. So maybe sometime.
We could do another tour.
Well, we did something unprecedented last year as well in that we took sales tax revenues and subsidized the utilities, which is, I don't know of any other cities that are doing that. And so I, I appreciated that in that when people come to me and say, hey, my utilities, my utilities, I say, we're doing more than anyone's ever done. We took from the sales tax budget that is used for so many different things. And, you know, the utility should be an enterprise fund that takes care of itself. It makes the revenue, it spends the revenue. And we were able to increase, to lessen those increases. And something that philosophically, as council members, you need to be thinking about if we want to do that again this year or not, but, but something to consider. It's, it's a tough one, man. Those utilities are, are hard. Those are real costs and, and, and real increases that, that need to happen year over year or you end up like Plaza Grove.
Did we do this on purpose where we put the newbies on this side and the wise guys on this side?
Orlando's next to you guys on purpose.
Chase is next to you on purpose.
Yeah, on, on the last page is the stormwater section. And we're still waiting for, to finish the master plan. But we're anticipating just biting the bullet one of these days and bond for about eight million dollars to do a lot of the master plan repair that we need to do. But as you can see, the stormwater has a very small rate increase because we're able to pay for our, for our operations and we have a little bit of debt, but, but that's looking fairly healthy. And of course, we're also going after grants all the time, so those help a lot. We'll just keep it, keep it going. Any other questions without?
So from time to time, we'll get the postcards saying we're transferring funds from one thing to another. Have they, have they been from these sort of utility funds to general funds? So does that speak to? I was just counting the number of years that we're not meeting our expenses. Why are we transferring funds over? Makes it seem like there's an overage.
Yeah, so that, that's a great question and one that we, we address every budget year. The state requires that we have to have a separate public hearing to accept comments on that specific issue. If we are transferring any money from our enterprise funds into our, our general fund. The reason why do we do that? So, so Jay or Ben mentioned, you know, our, our goal is that these utility funds are self-sufficient. So water pays for water projects, sewer funds pay for sewer projects and that we're not having to subsidize or borrow money from other revenue sources to pay for those. Those enterprise funds, as a standalone entity, contracts essentially with the city for other services. And so the administration, our HR, our legal, all of those, those costs and expenses, public safety, our overhead of our buildings, our facilities, are all paid for through general funds. And so what we are doing is we're taking some money from those enterprise funds and saying, we know that there's more costs than just operations and maintenance on the water. And so there's all of these other administrative and overhead costs. We're taking some of that money and paying the city back.
Gotcha, thank you.
And that is entirely what that transfer is for.
Awesome, thanks.
And that amount cannot be just some made up number in thin air. The state has a lot of controls that has to be, you know, fully justifiable and within reason, so.
Moving on.
And I'd like to give a shout out to our youth mayor and youth deputy mayor who are here visiting and observing. Hello, Chase and Kaylee.
Sorry, as we're leaving this, I got, just because I'm nutty in the construction world.
Wait, wait, why limit it to the construction world?
There's lots of worlds. But went over and watched as they were relining essentially a sewer manhole that's deteriorating due to gases. And the process, the technology, just the coolness of it was fascinating. I bet I spent, I came back later, took more pictures. I bet I spent five hours through the day coming back and forth and watching. Is essentially they put a balloon down in, it's all coated in, I make it sound easy, but it is not, in resin. Then they blow it up. Then they cure it and then they take out the stuff and it's this new lining in there that we hope will last for a hundred years.
Yeah, it's a, it's a all fiberglass. So the structure of the manhole is still in, in good shape. So we put this new liner, the fiberglass, and the hydrogen sulfide does not attack that fiberglass. So I was looking at replacing that manhole with different ways. And I was going to estimate about two hundred thousand dollars just to replace that structure.
Jeez.
We were able to get this, this person that I came across at a conference, he ended up lining four manholes that were in similar condition for under ninety thousand dollars. So to just. Those, those things that, that we come across and, and we just save, save money. We could have said, ah, I was just doing the old way in.
That's cool.
But yeah, these people were short, a guy that day that ran was over there helping. So I ended up having to, to, to jump in.
He jumped in and he was doing half the work.
Well, he asked me to go help him on this job they have in Hawaii next couple of months.
You said yes, right?
Thank you, Ben, for bringing that up.
Sorry, you're a little off in half minutes. Brian's getting you guys some plates, sorry.
My budget issues are so big.
Let's see, before we leave, utilities, so just keep in mind, these are recommendations that we think right now, this three percent water, seven percent sewer and two percent stormwater increase. We'll, we'll tighten that as we move forward over the next couple of months. And then you don't vote on these until officially we have a tentative budget that you'll vote on. And then you'll see a tightened revised proposed budget. And then you'll see it again for another vote on our final. So you're going to vote on these, whether or not to approve things and move it forward at least three times, so.
And all of these show last year's amounts versus this year's amounts, I, so we can.
Yeah, in your, in your documents.
Two years' history and then the current fiscal year that we're in, estimated, and then projected for next fiscal year.
Of, of note, just also wanted to make you aware, so we had a, a couple bigger projects, this new well that we've been talking about for a while. Part of this funding, we've siphoned off percentages and put it in. We've currently got one point one million approximately saved for that new well that we'll be talking about. And then I put water tank, it's actually water meters, for replacement water meters. We have about two hundred thousand that we've saved. And so we're trying to save for projects so that we don't have to borrow as much money in the future. So some of these rate increases is also socking money away for these known projects that are coming up in the future, so.
I think that's a business decision on our part. Something that, again, as council members to philosophically think of is, we could keep the rates lower. We really could. But when those capital expenses come along and we want to dig a well, we're borrowing for all of it, paying interest on top of it. And so anyways, something to think about because those questions will come up that, yes, yes, the rates do increase. And not only are we maintaining the services we provide, but we're planning for the future. And, and not to say that we always have done a good enough job that we don't have to bond for some of these things, because we do. But we're trying to find that balance between having to fund the entire capital improvement to put in a new lift station or, or well versus being able to come in with some cash.
Hey, Mike, this just freaked out almost in here again. Do you mind troubleshooting that? It's been good for a couple of meetings now, so.
But it's better, just, it's better to not pay to borrow money, right? It's better to spend fiscally and responsibly and, and.
That's what we have thought.
That's what we have thought.
Rather than pay interest. Try to get a little bit ahead for those expenses that you know are coming. We know the engine's going to burn out. And one of the troubles that honestly we've had is some of our expectations, because of the acidic soils, some of our pipelines don't last as long as they should have. And so that's an extra challenge.
And, and those three projects that we're doing right now, the Central Utah, the PRA connection for the secondary water on Fourth North, the water line on Center Street and the Canal Drive, that's all, we have the cash to, to pay for all those.
Which is phenomenal.
Those are over four and a half million dollars. Of course, we got some grants to help us along the way.
Hey, thanks. We're going to move on to our debt outlook for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Kristen will review that.
Yeah, so I was looking at this and realized, I know what it all means. And so I'm going to hopefully explain some of this to you. So the obligations, they of course have the year that they were issued. And then, then they have like the abbreviation of what it's called with the agency that issued it or, yeah. And so the two thousand eleven sewer revenue bond was done for Geneva Road for pipe and so, and some lift stations, I believe. And then the two thousand ten OWRF is Orem Water Reclamation Facility Expansion Project. And so that's their sewer treatment plant. And then the two thousand seventeen sewer revenue bond was for the Anderson Farms Lift Station. Is that what it is? It, the big pretty one? And the two thousand fifteen sales tax revenue refunding bond, that was, so it was refund in two thousand fifteen of a two thousand eight sales tax bond that was to pay for the pool. So that's the Aquatic Center. And then the two, twenty twenty-three RDA, Seven Hundred North. It's, CDA is the classification of what kind of RDA it is. And the TIF is tax increment funding. And then the STR is sales tax revenue bond because it's, it's backed by both the RDA tax increment and the, and the city's sales tax. And then the nineteen ninety-eight CUP is Central Utah Project Water Bond. And that was done a long time ago to get additional acre feet of water. And so that's a, you can see on the far end of the, of the right, the original principal and then the maturity date. And those are the, those are the ones that we have outstanding. They're all, uh, let's see, almost all of them are, are backed by specific revenue. Well, like technically, like we have pledged it with Orem, we just said we'll pay, but it is, we're using sewer funds to pay for it. We don't have any general obligation bonds, which would be property tax backed. And so we would add that on to people's property taxes. And we haven't had any general obligation bonds since I, I, we might have had some when I started, but it went away very soon after I started in the nineties, so. Turn of the century, we have it.
We also finished paying the, the pool and the fires, and the police and fire station. Do we have a bond for that or?
We haven't finished paying for the pool.
The pool is that kind of brown or orange color one. So it says that on that twenty fifteen sales tax refunding, or refunding is basically a refinance. So we refinanced at a lower rate.
Also, the reddish color is some of those.
So the reddish color, the second to the top, is the RDA that we just took out.
That's the land we just bought out.
Yeah, so that's over ten years, but I don't know that we're planning on, on taking the whole ten years. And then that one does have a balloon payment at the end because we were thinking that we would have it paid by then, so. And, and we do plan on paying extra on it each year in anticipation of that.
Comparatively, Linden has a very small amount of debt compared to a lot of other cities. And so we're doing great in that aspect. Thanks, Kristen. Anything on fund balances you want to mention or?
That is a big page to learn, study. Some of those dates that were forever. But, uh, some of those dates that were forever out, the pool is almost, is almost, you can think about it, it's now what, nine years out?
So, um, we looked at fund balances.
Why, Mike?
Tell, tell us what's going on, this is a big deal for you family.
My daughter's playing the second round for Springville basketball.
Can we say go Red Devils?
Go Red Devils. We're only five eight, not six six.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, I forgot to include the, uh, fund balance, uh, report. Um, I just, I had just presented it with our last, um, budget amendment. Uh, was that earlier this month? It seems like a long time ago.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, we've got good reserves and, um, I don't know.
That's good, we'll, we'll review those in a future meeting too, so. Um, let's move on to, just, uh, I wanted to highlight a few things as far as we'll, we'll be seeing some savings. And in our current, current budget, we have a few positions that were not immediately filled, uh, that we'll see some savings from, from those. Uh, a, a really unique thing that's gonna make a, a, a good amount of difference, our city recorder Brittany, she has combined her positions as the justice court clerk and the city recorder, and she's managing that. And so, um, we're watching that carefully, I don't wanna overburden her. Um, but she's been able to, she's got two really good, um, assistant clerks, part times, um, that, that have really stepped up and helped her. And so as of right now, um, we do not intend to refill, um, uh, or remove her from being the court clerk. She's doing both jobs and I think that might be able to continue. So that could be a great savings where essentially, um, we had a full-time position reduction. Um, we had a parks maintenance technician that's been open for several months, um, and continuing to look. We've advertised and we just can't quite find the right fit, uh, on that. Uh, but we think we're close, you got another round of applicants coming. Um, we've opened and closed that a couple times trying to find the right person, so. Um, but that'll be some financial savings. Uh, we've had a police officer vacancy periodically through this last year. And then our planning department had a planning vacancy. Um, and, and, uh, some, some positions as they turn over, uh, don't necessarily save us any money. Uh, we're losing some productivity and institutional knowledge, and so that's not a great thing in some respects.
Making up for it in overtime.
Yeah, in the police department or in pu- public works, we might be paying overtime if, if there's vacancies and so. But I think these were ones that were legitimate, we'll, we'll see some dollars saved. Um, we also had a, a postponed big purchase of a, a dump truck at Public Works that we decided not to pull the trigger on this year. And so that, that'll be a reduction in the current budgets, so. Um, increased revenues, uh, we actually, we didn't have a budgeted line item, um, that I know of for the sale of our surplus vehicles. Um, and so as of this last year, we, we had a big turnover where we had a lot of police vehicles, uh, that we disposed of. Normally, we've leased those and turned them over on our lease renewal every couple of years. This last year, year and a half ago, yeah, go ahead.
So what usually in the past, when we have, um, gotten a new fleet, turn that over, um, the, uh, dealer will buy back the trucks for the exact amount that we still owe on the lease. So it's a clean wash. And then this year, the new trucks were not available when it was time to turn the old trucks in. And so we had to pay off the old trucks. The, the lease had two years on it and then a balloon payment. And so we ended up paying, um, that and, and so then we purchased the trucks, then the new trucks became available. We did a new lease, but we didn't have to take those trucks back to the dealer at that point. So we were able to go out on the market and, and sell those. And, um, and yeah, we do have a, a, a revenue line for sale of surplus property.
Okay, I did, I did.
It's usually not noticeable, cause it's usually pretty small.
So that was, that was a good addition here for this year. Um, grants to date, uh, a big part of this was the Linden Heritage Trail where the mayor and, and Noah, our engineer, went back to, uh, Mountain Land Association of Governments and asked for additional funds to cover the project cost increases, um, that have happened over time. Uh, so we've, in, that was the, the majority of this one point one eight million that we've received in grants this, this current fiscal year. Um, but our staff does a really great job at always looking for opportunities there. And we've coordinated a lot in the last couple of years with, um, a grant writer, um, Ron.
Clegg.
Clegg, thank you. And he's a Linden resident, former kind of a retired engineer, used to work for Horrocks Engineers. Um, and he's been worth his money. He's, he's gotten us some great opportunities and so.
Yeah, we turned in another one today. Now we're paying for about five hundred and fifteen thousand to, to update all of our older than ten year, older water meters and also installing cellular endpoints for every connection. So, so now residents will have up to the hour usage on their fingertips.
Going to that next page there, personnel issues, um, we are, are growing and we have, you know, increased demand for services. I mentioned that recorder and clerk position, uh, police department, we are, thank you Orlando for being here, by the way. The chief is at a national chief's conference, is that what it was?
I think he's with his family.
Or is that next week?
He's with his family this week.
Oh, it's this week, his family, so coming up.
Adam tells it better than you. I heard you scheduled that after we scheduled this meeting.
Uh, we appreciate the lieutenant for being here, so, um, something we've, we've discussed, um, with, with the police and they're, they're looking at, we have a small force and we're looking at ways that we can retain good employees. And seasoned employees have a lot of opportunities to go to other agencies that are paying more. And the further north towards Salt Lake you get, the higher hourly rates there are. And, um, there's guys that are willing to drive. And so we're, we're looking for different ways to keep good people here. Uh, one of the things we've talked about is creating a, a possible third sergeant position in the department um, that would help split some of the duties off from, from the lieutenant and, uh, Orlando's got a full plate.
That's why I'm really here to help.
So, uh, we'll, we'll keep talking about that and look, um, as an opportunity, when we, we just recently filled this last fall a, a sergeant position and had great in-house applicants, um, several very qualified individuals that, uh, I think other agencies, if they had leadership positions, they would go or could go, I wouldn't say they will, but. Uh, so we're, we're trying to find ways that with minimal impact to our budget that we can help keep officers here, so. Um, and then the chief has mentioned, um, retail and service oriented businesses have higher call volumes. And so Walmart, the joke is that we can basically keep an officer there all the time with all the thefts that occur, um.
They did finally close their self-service checkout, it's long overdue. What?
Yeah, they just did research. So, so as seven hundred North develops, um, his, his thought is that we may need to, to look at a future officer, but that's, that's down the road, not something that would be proposed this year, so. Um, Parks and Rec, we're looking at a, a possible new part-time employee for nights and weekends uh, at the community center front desk. Um, so that would be a, a new position. And community center, um, sorry, community development. Um, right now, our, our two downstairs staff, Shelley and Marcy, uh, Shelley is full-time, Marcy's bumping into a three-quarter time. And we've got her at about twenty-eight hours a, a week. Um, by federal law, if they go over a thirty-hour a week average for that calendar year, we have to pay benefits. And so we're watching that carefully, um, but something that Mike is keeping his eye on, um, is that next step as, as we continue to grow, we, we may need to move that to a full-time position. Um, so the only new position that we would be looking at that, that's come up thus far from the, the departments is gonna be, uh, potentially is community center part-time, so. Um, Chase has prepared a memo this, this last year and again this year um, that outlines kind of our operational revenues and personnel costs over time and give you a quick second to review that, Chase?
Sure, yeah. Um, it's, uh, just kind of, uh, quick definitions, personnel costs, we define in the memo as, um, expenditures for wages, salaries and benefits for all of our employees, that includes our seasonal part-time and full-time folks. Um, and then, um, also, uh, the operating revenue is, um, is, are revenues that are, um, minus, so it's total revenue minus, um, internal transfers, grants for capital projects and proceeds from loans. Um, so everything that's left over, we take those, uh, those kind of, those types of things out. Um, and, uh, so from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, um, personnel costs grew about thirty-four percent um, over that time, from, uh, like five point nine million to seven point nine million dollars, um, for again wages, salaries and benefits for all those folks. Um, and then during that same period, um, the operating revenue grew about twenty-six and a half percent. Um, and, uh, so it, there's a, there's a couple of charts in there. Um, the first one's kind of five years, uh, of, uh, data, they both kind of, the dark blue and the kind of light green, uh, kind of are both gently sloping, uh, upward over time. And then, uh, there's a longer range, uh, kind of view of, uh, the same, same two, uh, two lines, operating revenue and personnel costs. You can just kind of tell over time that, uh, we've got, uh, a greater kind of rate of increase overall, um, for revenues, but, uh, that there's a, there's a wee bit of a little kind of uptick at the very end there in the, in the personnel costs and a little bit of kind of a, a flattening off of the, of the revenues kind of, uh, uh, last five-ish years. Um, kind of the very little tiny end there. Um, and, uh, that's, that's essentially everything that I have. If you have questions or concerns, happy to, happy to field those for you.
Any questions on personnel issues coming up this year then? Okay, thanks, Chase.
Is personnel issues the right term for that?
Personnel, taxes, costs, proposals, not issues. I, I need to change that header right here, so. Yeah. Um, with our merit pay and COLA, our cost of living allowance, um, we included in here, let me pull up the right one. Oh, sorry, before I jump into that, just in your packet, we gave a cost breakdown of that potential new part-time position at the community center there, so. Um, we did give a, a history there of the, the COLA in, increases that have been approved at the city. The far right column is, is what was approved, um, on those years. And then we compared this to different metrics. Um, we are looking at a variety of issues. We look at these different CPI or COLA increases for different entities, um, but also looking at our fund balances and seeing what our health is as far as our savings um, before we come to a final recommendation. Um, we, we believe based on some of our, these matrices that we've seen in, in other, other entities and these CPIs, um, we look at a twelve-month, tell me out with the right phrase.
Average, so it, you know, like if, when you're looking at January to January, it's a three point four. And February to February is a three point two, whatever. So we take all of those and average that increase. So we're not just, sometimes people just like pick two months and look at those two months and what, you know, from December to December, what did the CPI increase? But that's not, and, you know, maybe you missed, like there, overall, it's increased more or, or less, or, yeah.
So we're taking an average of that twelve months. So we, we believe as a, a preliminary, we're approximately probably around a four percent on our recommendation this year. But we'll tighten that and look at, at these as we move forward. Um, it has certainly been higher these last couple of years with the inflationary increases that we've seen and trying to stay competitive in wages is one of our biggest challenges, um, retaining employees. Um, we had a, our planner went to a position in Provo here recently. We lost, uh, one of our parks employees to Springville, um, this last fall and who else?
We've had others that got offers and then.
Yeah, we have, we have had a few offers.
Different experience.
That, that is part of that, um, these, these.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it depends on the individuals.
Depends on their situation.
So it's something that's always occurring though, and, and certainly with, with police as well. We've, uh, hear and see that often with agencies trying to keep people and, and they continually go up and so. Um, so that, that cost of living allowance shifts our entire pay scale. If there's a, a percentage that's approved, it moves all of the pay ranges up that percentage. And so, um, doesn't necessarily mean that an employee will get a, a four or a five or a one percent raise. Their, their pay range is shifting by that amount so that they can move into those higher rates. So, um, let's see, could you say that again?
So imagine a grid that has twelve steps on it and then there, but the, and there's thirty ranges. And so a position will be like on range twenty. And then, and they can go up the steps when they have a merit increase, that's how you go up the steps. But a COLA increase changes the whole grid, every number in the grid will go up the approved percentage.
Um, and that pay range chart is in the approved budget, I can send that to you, sorry, should've had that.
Oh, no, it's raised.
Wage studies, Chase is, is doing a lot of research on that and, and will, will look at if, if there's any specific targeted changes that may need to be made where we're, we're falling behind on pay ranges. Um, we, we've made some adjustments in the last few years often with specific positions. And so we're looking at individual positions, um, annually. And, um, just as an FYI, there was some new legislation that was proposed and I am not certain where it's at right now, um, that came up in this session that would require, the way it was, the last draft I saw, it would require a public hearing, separate public hearing during your budget meeting to adopt any change in compensation for city officers. And the definition of officers included not just elected officials, but appointed individuals. So many of our department heads or treasurer or recorder, um, there is some ambiguity on what compensation meant in the legislation question. And one of the meetings I was in was, so if we give somebody a gift card, does that mean I have to have a public hearing before I can give them a gift card? Um, and that was unclear, and so.
How's that different than the two or three public hearings we have during the budget process where these things are discussed as well?
Just adds another one, we have to close the general budget and open, uh, a specific public hearing on the compensation portion of the budget.
And we, we would talk in our prior years, I mean, we had compensation as part of that public hearing, but it was included with all of the other budget stuff, so.
And, and we have to put it as a separate agenda item as well, so.
Be interesting to see where that goes.
Yeah.
What, what bill is that, you know, or?
I don't know that offhand, but I'll find that and send it to you.
There's only seven hundred numbers each year.
So HB, STUPID.
For, for the record.
We are, uh, this year, we've been with, for our, our health coverage, we've been with P E H P insurance. It's, um, a public insurance company, uh, run through, well, it's a, it's a private company, but run under the umbrella of, of URS, you know, Utah Retirement System. And so, um, they've been, been good for us, uh, but we've been locked into a rate with them for the last three years and that rate lock expires this year. And so we are, uh, having our insurance consultants go out to the market and rebid our numbers again this year. And we'll see what those come in at. Traditionally, we've seen a five to seven percent increase annually on our insurance costs. Um, and that's been pretty consistent from year to year. And so we've, um, in, in years. And so we've, in years, we've gone to different, if, if we have a big rate jump, we've gone to different companies. And we usually get an introductory rate and the following year they jack their prices up and make up that difference. And so changing isn't always beneficial.
Adam's mentioned in the past too, sometimes it's hard for employees to jump to a new network and lose their provider that they're used to.
They haven't switched for a while though, have they?
Yeah, and we've had that three-year lock and so we haven't changed for a while. But we'll see what that comes back with. And those numbers come in really fast and it's usually not something that we, we bring to the council as a specific action item. We have a, a set of offerings with our benefits that we're trying to maintain. And so we're saying, hey, here, insurance consultants, go get us the same benefits and see what the rates come in at. And then once we get those numbers back, we have a limited number of days to pull the trigger on, on whichever action we're pulling, or we're going with. And so we'll keep you up to date and informed, but that specific item has to be done before you finalize the budget. And so I think it's, when's our open enrollment in May? And so we'll keep you informed.
Open enrollment to be in May, we have to have already signed with the company in April or March.
Yeah, so that comes up quick on us, but we'll let you know. I'm gonna turn this over to some of our department heads for some specific updates that they had. Juan, can we start with you?
Adam, before we go there, I just looked that bill up, it's ninety-one, SB ninety-one, and it just got circled today, which means they're putting a hold on it, so.
Good.
Third substitute is, is, so that's good news.
If it's got hold, it won't come out of committee in time. Won't happen this year, next year maybe they'll try it.
We already touched a little bit on this, projects on, on the water. We're gonna look at the three percent increase in the rates. Capital projects, we are in the RFP process to go out for the redundant well. We should have that out to some consultants, not soon enough, but in the next couple of weeks. And then it takes about, to go from point A to point B, it takes about a year and a half. If everything goes great, maybe two years to, to finish a, a well of that, that size.
What would you forecast the output is?
We want something that it's also in the twenty-five hundred gallons a minute rate to, to be able, that, that'll be the redundant to well number four. Well, number four, a year ago after we rebuilt it, we ran a whole year just on well four, we let the other three rest. So with one big well, well that big, we can, we can just run. In the winter time, we usually just run the smaller ones and let the, the well number four take a break. But summertime, we need all four to, to keep up with the demand.
This plan has been here as long as I've been here, by the way, I like to get a well.
Yep.
You were born or elected?
Good clarification. See, ten years.
Was that correct, Adam? Was the seventy-eight percent of the cost was for future, future growth also could qualify for, to be paid by impact fees? So that's, that's good news, that keeps some of our operating funds for other projects. And the operations, we're looking at start to replace a ten-year-old cellular, not cellular, water meters. And that's the grant that we just submitted for today, that's gonna be about a one point one million dollar project. If we do all seventeen hundred meters that are older than, than ten years.
And we should be able to capture some additional revenue that's being lost.
That's, that's one of the goals. We're thinking we have, well, we do know that we have forty-three percent on billed water. But a lot of that big number is due to our, the leaks that we have in our system. But at least we'll be able to, we know how much with the meters that we have right now in the, in the wells and springs, we know exactly how much is being produced. We have a pretty good idea of what we're billing because of those meters are not as accurate. But once we get those meters as accurate as we can, then we can see what that loss really is. Some of the laws that we have in the residential side, it happens from the meter to the house, right? So this person has a leak in, in their service line and then they come a month after. As I say, my water bill now is five thousand dollars and I didn't know I had a leak. With this cellular endpoint on the AquaTrax website, they'll be able to see if they have a leak and be notified in a day versus waiting for a whole bill period to get, so we'll, we'll save a little bit on that. That also comes with, well, I don't know if they end up paying for that, all that water that they spilled. We usually have a one-time forgiveness where we don't capture.
For half of the usage.
For half of the usage.
One, one time a year?
When's that, lifetime?
I think it's lifetime. A good job going through the utility accounts to finding.
This is for meters, ten years and older, they start not.
Shouldn't they last longer than that, or? Well, the new ones, how long should they last?
We have, we have, the, the ones that we use for culinary is a mechanical meter. So it, it does have a, a wear on it. So then as they get older, they start bleeding less accurately. If we go with the ultrasonic that we put in the secondary water meter, they are, they don't have any moving parts. But the price of the meter is twice the one of a mechanical, not quite twice, but, so it's a matter of saying.
Right, just curious how long they thought they were gonna last?
About, that's the standard, about ten to fifteen years. If you have really hard water or a little abrasive, then the life of the water, the, the meter goes down from there. With that said, we're also gonna get a test bench for, for the water department. We will be able to pull a meter from the field and be able to test it and see what kind of, to test, for example, what a five-year-old meter is doing, what a six-year-old, you know, just trying to, to gauge when is the sweet spot to be replacing those meters and not just replacing for, for the heck of it. We'll, we'll take a sample, okay, of these meters that are here, let's pull one randomly, two or three, test them and see where their efficiencies are. All part of the trying to not just replace meters for, for the sake of replacing them. We're also working on, the goal is that as we start rebuilding streets, like the case was of Canal Drive or Center Street, that we look at the infrastructure underneath before we do a full road rebuild. So we're kind of working hand in hand with the, with the street replacement plan to see, okay, let's, let's replace that waterline because we might not do it and then we'll be repla, you know, blowing up the road, so it only makes sense. The last page that I have here on, the first page that has the map for the street building is for this in the fiscal year we're in. We have a tool that we're now using called Inform Streets. That is a, this is what we're doing this year. There is a lot of replacement, if you see the orange, so here on the legend, it tells you what kind of treatment the road is gonna, is gonna get. So we have, the red one is complete pulverizing the road and reshape it and repave it.
Nothing's more expensive than that.
Not, well, only if you have to dig the sub base. That, but this is probably as, as expensive as we're gonna get here. The only one that we did a full excavation was Twenty Eight Hundred West, whether by Mark Weldon's property coming from Fourth to Sixth. That was an old farm road and the trucks were just destroying that thing. So we ended up having to dig down about two feet of, of that and, and rebuild it. But you can see there is a lot of the expensive replacements this year. There's hardly any, any just slurry. It's, it's, we have about, the mayor used to sign that contract for about, was it two point three, something like that? And next year, it's a, it's a pretty, a pretty, the only road that we're gonna touch is gonna be Center Street. Center Street is gonna take all the money we have for one year, is gonna be about two, two point two, two point four. We're still getting, getting numbers, but that will be curb and gutter, sidewalk, roundabout, and new, new shaping of the roads. Then for next year, I'll, I'll have that tool that we're now using, Inform Streets, to give you a really good idea which roads we're gonna, we're gonna touch up. So the way, the way it works, it has a, we do an assessment of the entire road with a lidar, with, kind of like a sonar, put it that way. Where it's sending signals down, reflects them, and then it's actually painting a picture of there is ondulations, if there is a lot of cracking. And then based on that, we put it in the software and we wanna say, we wanna keep our roads at a seven to a ten grade. We don't want to, to drop below that amount. And based on the amount of money that you put into how much you wanna spend, it gives you how far above that seven line to go. So it's, it's very interesting. And then you click on the year and it gives you the roads that you want to, to do. And that takes the guesswork or the human interface of saying, you know, if you missed a road, well, that's still good. This, this guy is measuring right to the, to the half inch, to the inch indentation of curvature and things. And for a really good, good price, we're, we're very happy with it. Let's see. We're gonna replace fire hydrants older than nineteen eighty-four. We have some that we've been replacing that have dates of nineteen sixty-three, nineteen sixty-four. They don't make any more parts. We, the oldest one we're pulling out right now is in front of that historical house on Four Hundred North and One Thirty-Five West? West, east, no.
Fourth North and One Thirty-Five?
This way of main, so One Thirty-Five West.
Okay, on the corner.
Right on the corner. So that one is, that nineteen sixty-four fire hydrant. We are also, we finished the master plan for water and we had the IFA and IFFP. And the recommendation was to increase our impact fee. Actually, the water decreases to fifteen fifty-seven for the one-inch connection.
That's what we are at, at now.
And it decreases to fourteen sixty-seven. So we decrease a little bit on that. On the sewer, we are proposing that seven percent increase on the utility rate. With Orem City, we finished, or they're in the process of, that project we went and looked at with the tertiary treatment. Our part was supposed to be one point eight seven two million. We supported them with, with their letter of support, they got a grant for five hundred and fifty thousand that gets credited to us. And our balance is gonna be about one point three million. We were counting on about two hundred, at about a million, and then we're gonna pay it in five years. But the new total is one point three two. And then we have the Phase One Sewer Improvement, that's our share, is gonna be four point four million for the next five years. We're in the design process to do all the infrastructure on Gilman and Lakeview. We're gonna put sewer, stormwater and water utilities on their Lakeview. And then we'll come and reveal that road is way past due. That's one of those farm roads that was just chipped and overlayed, chipped and overlaid, so. We have enough money with, what we put, last year we had four hundred and sixty thousand on sewer. And this year we're budgeting seven hundred and forty thousand from fund balance to complete the project. And then stormwater will have their, their share of the, of the system. And we're also replacing the old water line to, to be able to do that project. We talked about the reduction in infiltration sources, that'll be direct savings of the water we send to, to Orem City. And part of the reducing infiltration is to re-line. That's the beauty about sewer lines is that we can do that rehabilitation from the inside of the pipe. And opposite of the water, we actually have to excavate the whole water line. This one, we're able to just do it from inside and have little impact on our residents. Our draft impact fee increases from a thousand eighty-six to eighteen oh nine. And that's due because of all the things we have to do for, for the sewer plant. Stormwater, we have the very small increase of two percent, finished the master plan. We're gonna meet with our financial advisors, see what, what's the, what are the vehicles to get eight million dollars. We're not gonna go after it right away, we're gonna finish the master plan and see what projects are. One that is gonna come up right, right away is finishing the piping of the main ditch that runs all the way from the old Linden Nursery, all through town, through Gilman, through Lakeview. And that ends up on the corner of Two Hundred South and about Six Seventy West, over there by Jake's house. We're gonna start a tree removal process on the main ditch to, to clean up. Mostly right now it's just to get the debris that keeps plugging our, our pipes. And then we'll finish the engineering and we'll start piping that ditch in sections. That will also help with the water that we think is exfiltrating from the ditch when it's running full. And it goes through the ground and bubbles up on the basements of the houses that sit directly west of the ditch. And those are the suspected people that are pumping their basements into the sewer system. So we're hoping to, to kill two birds with one stone. And then there is the other list of capital projects that we've had in the works for a while. That include the, the tension pond on Fessenbrook and some connecting pipes. The Stormdrain in Gilman and to Fessenbrook, the expansion of the Killen Pond on Nine Hundred East, One Forty North. The piping of the main ditch. And then we are working with Pleasant Grove City. They are looking at, or they actually went, went to bid on this project where they're widening the channel on Two Thousand West. So we have Two Thousand West, commercial area, industrial area on the east side, and then we have the transfer station on the west. There's that old road and that main ditch actually takes, well, most of that water comes from Pleasant Grove, so they're gonna be.
It was on the news for flooding.
Yeah, the, the one that was in the news for flooding. They're gonna expand the size of that conveyance. And we're replacing the culverts underneath Two Hundred South and the road that goes to Vineyard. I don't know what number is that, but it's our Two Thousand West continuing to be here. Still looking for the property at somewhere in the Lakeview for another detention basin. And we're looking at spending the grant that the state kind of backed out on us to pipe the main ditch. We're gonna put that money towards the, making the wetlands west of Geneva Road by the power plant to, to take, take a little more water, increase the capacity that we retain and do what, you know, improve water quality to the lake.
Did, did we do, has there been any movement on that possible trade of any land? Some of the things we were looking at for that one.
On the Lakeview parcel?
Yeah.
Torrance?
No.
Cooks?
Cooks. Trade has kind of gone with that development coming in, being turned away. That was where the swap was maybe gonna be a comedy.
We're still working on Tony Cook, but he wants some property exchange for it and we're, we kind of have it there with a. We, we still want, they know we want it, so we'll see what, how things develop with that. Okay, and then I already touched on the, on the streets. Our cemetery, we just received an RFP from a consultant to do the design, the expansion design. And then we hoping to have some documents ready to send out to bid probably for the following fiscal year.
We'd look at, we budgeted this year to finish the design and then we had talked about in twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six building it, but come for, come asking for funding from council on the next budget year. We are about seventy-four percent sold. And just in the past two weeks, we had over, let's see. We are about seventy-four percent sold and just in the past two weeks, we had over, let's see. We had eight burials in the past ten days, so.
On the streets, Daryl, I remember him referring to nine hundred east being redone as well. You mentioned Center Street, but is nine hundred east anywhere on that list? One forty north, I saw some things on there.
Nine hundred east is not on this year's plan. It's probably gonna be on the following year with the with the Center Street.
No, this is eight thirty-five before it turns.
Yeah, that that section right there is completely gone. So yeah, we'll see how how much money we have left over from the Center Street. We'll get those prices. And then the nine hundred east, it's a it's a pretty pretty easy one to to add on to the to the line. But all the ones that are that spur up from Canal Drive, six thirty north, Mayor, is that the one that people keep telling talking to you talking to you about?
Which one? Seven twenty-five north?
Yeah.
One thirty-five south.
Seven thirty-five is on this year.
Six thirty north this year is this year and then seven twenty-five is also on this year's.
So our engineers have have put together in the past a five-year outlook on on possible projects and upcoming streets. So we'll we'll update that and bring that to you guys.
Yeah, with this with this new system we're using, this is the last year that we're using that and then for the following year, we'll switch over to that other other tool.
Thanks, Juan. A decade ago, we were saying, public workers, we gotta get going and and update projects and keep things maintained. And with Juan here, I almost have to say whoa. And so thank you for all you're doing.
My pleasure.
Like a racehorse.
Close here, everybody. So we'll jump over to Heath. He wanna run through your items?
I just need a couple of, I'm a very cool person and I just wanted you to see some of the things that council that I'm talking about. So I don't follow my words more than usual. Which I'm pretty good at. Couple of things we've got, we'll just go picture by picture. As I talk about a few things that are pressing us. It's amazing how important the UV systems are for the pool. If you don't know what the UV system is, all the water that's circulated goes through big blue lights. And it's UV light and they kill the nasty bugs that we can't filter out. And this all came about two thousand, what, two, when that cryptosporidium broke out and it came from the lakes and then went to all those pools. So we all, on every one of our water bodies, we have UV systems and they are incredibly expensive to maintain. What happens is the bulbs break inside. You can work on one or two bulbs, but they all need service. And it didn't turn out to be too much of a for five bodies, but we were planning on ten thousand dollars there to get those serviced. The health department does require them to be on and serviced, so it's one of those things that that we kinda have to do. So those first three pages are what a UV system looks like. Then you'll see on this page that shows this big gate valve. We have a fourteen-inch gate valve that's leaking like a sieve and it's so expensive. We're looking at probably twenty thousand dollars for that valve. But it's leaking water and chemical and we took it apart last year. Alex and I and Alan Caleb took it apart. Took a look, couldn't see anything necessarily broke with it except that it's fifteen years old and holds all that pressure. We put it back on and it's still buying, so we're trapped there. We've gotta stop that leak. And then I when I put these into the the document, between the pages of the UV systems is this Beck seven computer. All of our water bodies in the pool are run by computers, right? And it's been, well, since two thousand eight, we put those computers in and they're starting to give error and fault. And the new computers are twenty thousand dollars each.
And how many computers?
There's one for each water body, five. So we don't need to do them all this year, but we'd like to maybe start the process. The the good news about it is it's the difference between an eighty-four Ford and a two thousand twenty-one Ford. There's all kinds of system updates on that, which makes it almost fault-proof for error in some cases. In fact, this computer with the new filter can run a backwash, which is a big process for for keeping it hygienic. And you can do it from your phone. There's an error and you get a chemical out of balance, tells you on your phone. You make the adjustment on your phone and the computer takes care of it. But those three things are are kinda pressing issues besides the regular maintenance things that we'll get to. Then in the parks, we put on the agenda that I had a hundred thousand dollars planned for shade over the baseball fields. Our baseball program is short, but there is no shade. And parents, you know, bring in umbrellas and everything. I had a hundred thousand dollars ready to go get the shade in that. And we found that the concrete is no good. It's separated and stepped and it's tilted and fallen down. And so we're asking for double that to get concrete and shade put in at the same time for that. It's amazing how expensive that is. But we're look, well, you'll see unless unless you decide not to fund it, you'll see that in the buzzer request. We also don't have any foul ball fence hoods at Fessenbrook, so we would request those for the safety of those watching our our program and playing around there. We'd like a parks aerator. We don't aerate our grass, but aeration, of course, if you don't know anything about that, that's valuable to help longevity of grass. We don't have an aerator, but now we have an updated tractor that can handle one. We would like to to see if we can get some aeration done. And then in the on the agenda on point D, Fessenbrook Park Expansion. You remember for since two thousands, no, when was that first master plan done? It was done about four thirteen or four?
Two thousand six.
Was it six or seven? Yeah, it was. Yeah, ten years from. The property next to Fessenbrook Park was put on the master plan and it was it's that steel mill down there. So I I included in this a picture of the council-approved master plan for Fessenbrook Park. That was done way back then, things are now, but we understand and Mike has told us over the last year or two that the owner of that property, Mel Ratmull, would like to sell it. He's gonna, well, he's gonna go. He's selling it. Mike got a a concept design of of three buildings similar to his neighbor to the north. And then Mel said that he was gonna stay for a couple more years because of the property he's going to, an American Ford, is not ready or under a lease to somebody else. But we never really approached the council with these thoughts, but once this property is gone, it's gone. So on the next page, I think twelve dollars a square foot is what I've heard might be a marketable price for that. But I need direction on whether or not the council has any interest in going after a portion or that whole piece of property. To expand Fessenbrook Park, expand baseball to a maybe a softball-sized field, a little bit bigger fields. We do have a little operational issue there and it's for one day a year. When that property is sold and the buildings are put in, we will not be doing fireworks there anymore because our fall zone is gone. So I don't know if we'll have to see if the school let us shoot fireworks. We don't even with the buildings there, we don't even qualify for like one-inch shells that they shoot. It's just a it's this operational issue there. But I need some direction, not tonight, but I need some direction on on if the council has interest in in pursuing some of that property. And I have not broached Mel about it and asked him. I hit his son and his son's kinda taking over his business. He says, sure, how much you want? How much property do you want? You know, we're we're gonna move out of here and we don't have to develop it, so that's about as far as I've gone.
So they could be selling the eleven point six and you're thinking maybe four.
Yeah, he he would, I I'm sure he would carve out four for us. In preparation for this, I had this property surveyed and his property goes along the fence line to the left. So really, the the trail is just barely on our property. So there the grass goes way back, our sprinklers go way back, but his property line, when he sells it, he's gonna put a fence right next to the trail. And so that would even limit what we can do with with any baseball programs, foul balls or any kind of adultery programs.
The four acres does let you shoot off the fireworks that you want to shoot off.
Mm-hmm. From the inside field and and the building to the west, directly to the west on that picture, we checked with them and they are right in it. The circle goes right in their building and so we just checked with them and they've been really good about it to us. So our Linden Day celebration might be disturbed by that. Anything out on that, Adam? We'll just move on through that, I think.
No, no decisions needed from you guys tonight. We're just dropping big issues that we might be talking about in this budget.
That's right.
When I when I look at the original master plan, are those tennis courts? My eyes aren't good enough to see the text, dude.
They were, but you're gonna let me do anything in there. He's gonna dig that retention basin down.
We could we could put pickleball courts.
Well, maybe underwater, so let's put pickleball courts over here. Yeah, because of that, because of of the the future of digging that out.
We'll fill, you support soccer.
Yeah, in fact, it'll be probably better. We'll put some topsoil down, won't we, like this? We'll put some topsoil down unlike when we originally built it, so the grass is really thin and it's rocky and and native clay underneath what we've got now. So it'll be better for soccer when it's all.
There's a lot of little football teams that practice there all the time.
Lacrosse kids come down.
Yeah, it's a big.
In fact.
Field is used a lot.
Some organization went and painted fields two years ago and I think it was football. I don't know, but they painted fields on our grass and I didn't know who they were.
Would you ever look at trying to run us an adult softball program?
I would on one field because you can run three programs a year. You can have a doubleheader league and have ten teams and they're paying seventy hundred dollars a team or even more. So I would like an adult field, but just with three hundred and ten-foot fences, something like that. Okay, so the other thing in parks, I talked about that expansion of that park. It is up for sale or he is preparing to get rid of it, but it could be two years before. He he's not gonna leave for a couple of years, so that needs to be just to be left out. Community center, I talked a little bit about the the part-time employees, the employee that we need. We've found that we would like this new employee to check the vets hall and and be there for the Saturday, Sunday.
Sorry, I got a text from a resident saying they can't hear us.
Testing, testing.
That's good. Thank you, Bear. So we've got the this employee would would be available on weekends to to run, keep the community center safe and and our asset safe as well as a check in and out. There's there's always a Friday night, Saturday night, Saturday day and night, Sunday reservation at the vets hall. And we don't always get back what we would hope in cleanliness and care of that building, so I just put that out there.
And people call the mayor when they need to.
And people, and people, yeah. And then Adam and I were talking, the other thing with the community center, we've had a couple of things happen the last couple of years that are pretty much age, not neglect related, age-related. We had a big flood off of the roof last winter, which really destroyed the old kitchen. And it was pipes that go in between the cinder blocks, the way they build them. And that building is eighty years old or a little bit more. And so Adam and I were talking, just to plant the seed, what do do we wanna start thinking about the future of a community center to replace that that aging building? And so because I'm a visual guy, I threw in a bunch of pictures that that don't really represent anything except community centers that I've been to recently. This is to scale, this picture is to scale from VCBO Architecture for the same field house the following pictures show that's in Farmington. And it was built in, it was, they took residency in that two thousand sixteen and it cost them six point two million dollars to build that that field house. And so if you wanna look at those pictures, you you'll just be able to see not a not a recreation center other than community rooms rooms and a gym and a and a track, just a no water, no, you know, very minimal locker rooms. You can see the track that we've seen and then how they they run their gym for basketball. In fact, tonight, this is not a huge problem for us, but it has been a little bit this year particularly. I had eighty kids going to the junior high tonight to play basketball and the school called us this morning and said, oh, sorry, you can't come. And it was a double booking, but they decided they decided to have another parent-teacher conference. And so they said, we're real sorry, but we'll give you your money back, but you know, I've got eighty kids and the others, we're at Rocky Mountain, we're at Linden Elementary and we're at the junior high and it's kind of a difficult thing to do. I also included a picture of the Santaquin New Recreation, they they call it a community center, which is on a wing of the city hall. If you go by Santaquin, you can see it. It's ten thousand square feet. I talked with John today. They have a big room that will hold twenty-four banquet tables in the upstairs with all the wedding kind of a stuff. And then the other wing, the wing to the north is still vacant, but then they have their offices and downstairs, a couple of small community rooms, community center. So here's the cost for that little building, this last year was three million dollars. So I I I just would like to think in a ten or a twenty-year plan, maybe maybe ten-year plan, we can start thinking about if we wanted to change that building and sock it some money away, maybe to use a replacement, now would be the time. And then the last page I included was the page of of the property of the Linden Elementary. We don't know the status of that. We we really don't, but if it becomes available, it's about just about nine acres, just eight point nine when when I measured it. But that's a piece of property that could not be replaced and might be the answer to a park or something or or a community center in the future. And I would say, just off the cuff, without the current problems of the current building, maybe that's a future thing. If we get the property in ten more years, we put a community center there. But whatever happens there, that's just some thought. So that's just a bug in the ear for the future on something like that. We do have something coming to council. I'm I'm sure it's gonna come to council, probably the next council meeting, that I wanted to just, Adam and I decided we ought to just throw at you. That's really not on the agenda, but it's a good chance to do it. Our Holy Cow Boutique, which comes to to us four times a year. We have been grandfathering them year to year on the price of the two thousand seventeen fee schedule. And so they are getting an amazing deal because it's the two thousand seventeen fee schedule. When they originally came to council, I'm sure you were there, I don't know if you guys were there. She said, she said, I can't do it unless you lower the price. So if I join the chamber, will you give me five percent off? Counselor decided yes. If if I rent the whole building, can I have five percent off? The council said yes. Then she said, and I I think it should be just, I wanna pay for eight hours a day, not the whole time I'm there. So we limited it to eight hours a day. So currently, and she's up to about ninety hours of rental right now, she's paying about six thousand dollars a show, which is some pretty nice revenue.
For a week, for how many days, four days?
Six thousand, no, it's Saturday to Saturday. That's.
She says she says that.
No, she she Saturday to Saturday. So she's up to about ninety hours and she pays about six thousand dollar show a show, which is nice. And then she has average, what, Adam, twenty two thousand, twenty-two hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars in sales tax revenue right in there. So it's nice coming to the city. Our current fee schedule, she should be paying fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty per show. We just kinda just kinda let it grow. And now I've got at least two other boutiques that are paying this year's fees. So I have sent her and Brian had helped me prepare an agreement, a contract. So I have sent her, and Brian had helped me prepare, uh, an agreement, a contract. And we talked with Adam and and we've given them a four percent increase as they go from year to year to year. But it'll only take till two thousand forty till she hits her fee schedule rate.
This year's fee schedule rate.
She, till she hits this year's fee schedule rate. So we've, we've been playing with a an agreement. Her husband is an attorney and he's red lined, a good attorney, he's red lined a bunch of stuff and we've changed it back and forth. However, uh, I need some direction on the fee schedule. Do we want, does the council feel good about giving them this break? Or or do we want to have them uh, look at the current fee schedule rate and work to that in a goal? You know, at a four percent increase, you know, I'll be long dead in the ground before they get to there. You know, at twenty forty, before they get to that fee schedule. We've talked about some grandfather clauses where, uh, you know, there's, there's a hundred different ways to trick it. But we, I I don't know if she has another option, if we present, you gotta get to the current fee schedule. And it would, you know, it could be a loss of revenue, but the other, it's a fairness thing and it's a, it's a law thing too in the fee schedule. We've just been treating it like a grandfather thing, but this is gonna come to council. And I wanted to make you all aware of that because I'm sure she's probably gonna come talk about it with you. And whatever the council decides, whatever we can propose to the council, uh, we can work with for sure. And it's, it's a nice bunch of revenue, but it is something that has just kind of grown beyond what we need to.
If they were charged the current rental rates, uh, we would make more revenue than even including all of their sales tax.
Including it all, yeah.
Just by charging them the normal rental rate and.
And she's been a good renter, she is really clean, she cleans up, she obeys our rules. And so I, you know, for what it's worth, it could be worse for something we don't want in there. We did a ramp on the far side, uh, H V A C stuff, yeah. So that's coming to council, so be prepared, I'll I'll be there with some of this information, but I'm gonna let her know that that contract, you know, it's gotta be approved by you guys. And that you need to decide whatever you're gonna do, because again, the difference is six thousand to fifteen thousand per show. So I don't even know if she can do that, uh, or wants to do that, but it'll come to council.
Two other organizations that are coming in.
And using.
Similar and and paying the current rate.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand, that's what you're proposing to her and is that current?
I'm not proposing that, what I propose is a four percent inflator and that's on our our draft agreement. And then Adam and I looked at it and it's, you know, it's a four percent every year, but it's still way off from the current fee schedule. And the reason we changed the fee schedule is because we had four categories. We had a resident, non resident, commercial, nonprofit, five percent off, five percent off, max per day. And the computer programming of our reservation computer couldn't keep up. We could keep up to program the computer, I'm sure it could have tracked that fine and dandy. So I'm proposing, I'm proposing that the council talk, we talked about it in council meeting and maybe we'll have two or three ideas I can throw at you. And maybe one of those ideas is, sorry, the others are paying that rate.
How many years has she been here now?
I think she started two thousand seventeen.
And that was, she was a P G, right?
She was.
That old building used to be, right?
Yeah, and it was a a major.
Or the purchased Holy Cow.
Yeah, she, when she bought it, yeah. She, she had a a pretty good deal over there, but that, it was what it was, it was an old building that didn't have great heat or air conditioning, so.
What are these other boutiques? I'm, I'm surprised.
Creators Collective Market and.
I can't remember the name of, uh, Delilah's is the creative collective market.
I've been. I'm trying to back into the sales tax number to see how much money she, they're they're making. So just as an F Y I, that's actually proprietary that we can't disclose that for a specific business, so. So we can talk in some generalities, but we can't give you the exact number in this public setting.
So, so, uh, the other, and and you know, the other big one that was over in Pleasant Grove. And what was that called, Lone Peak or remember that boutique? Anyway, they've used other buildings because, you know, they couldn't get into our building. And consequently, these, these boutiques are great for our revenue, but it's making it really hard for us to schedule our stuff. And so there is maybe a limit when we just can't take anymore, but right now, this is where we're at. I think that's my last thing, oh, maybe I could just hit you about one other thing. Two years ago, we raised the pool party rate from six hundred to eight hundred an hour. I felt really kind of uneasy about that number, we proposed nine hundred, eight hundred or one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, we picked the middle. Right now, as it stands, in February, I have eight days left of eighty two. So I'm gonna propose we raise that price again. Because again, if the price is raised five hundred bucks and we only have half, we're gonna capture most of the money that we're getting now. So I'm, I'm gonna propose that we raise the pool party rates. So if you'll, you'll think about that for me, so of eighty three possible days, right now, today I have eight.
So just for the, just for the remaining eight and then in perpetuity the increase, right? You would honor that for the.
Yeah.
The book days and.
Yeah.
You're thinking of going from eight hundred to nine hundred.
Maybe. Yeah, maybe. You know, as we've, as, as our, as our reputation has got out, we've had big businesses call us and say, I want it for the whole day. And I will not leave those businesses out, some are in Linden, some are not, I want the whole pool, the whole day. And I said, well, it's gonna cost you, okay. How much? And and so we've got our residents we need to take care of, but there is some revenue available there. But we should, if you had half the revenue at a thousand, we'd capture all that extra money if we only had half the reservations and more pool time for the people to swim, so.
Do you have any idea of what percentage of those businesses or organizations that are renting it are Linden roots or?
I would say, I haven't ever tracked that, but I could look up the list, but I would say better than probably a third.
I would feel a lot better if if I find out that they're not rooted out of Linden raising the rates doesn't bother me much.
Chris, Chris Dexter always has a party and there's a family, uh, Ron Whiteley's family that always rents the pool and they bring people from California and they, they make it a big rental. So there are some families and stuff, but it's not for the ward or the stake, you know, they can't. B Y U, Young Single Adult does rent it for one night, but I'll just leave it at that, but I I'm gonna propose that and that could be a little pushback, so I just wanted to.
Those rates are not, it's, it's just one rate, not resident, non resident.
Correct. Yeah, and it's, right now, it's eight hundred dollars an hour and and, uh, parties are minimum three hours, so. We're getting into that kind of money. I think, I think that's it for me, Adam.
Okay. Orlando, you wanna run through your stuff?
All right, the part we all been waiting for, me to speak. I'm quiet in the corner and now I'm gonna talk, so get ready. Adam did a great job, uh, talking about the sergeant position we're looking for. Obviously, that will help, uh, his responsibilities will be oversight training. I mean, we've got a lot of state legislation mandatory training that we need to take care of, defensive tactics, arrest control, shooting. I mean, the list goes on and on, it's just getting more and more. Also over equipment, uh, getting new equipment, getting old equipment out. We just got a lot of new video, video cameras, the L P Rs that we're now putting on the street. And then the, uh, in car cameras, it's gonna require a lot of maintenance, so we're looking at that. But most important of this position, we're looking at getting my patrol sergeants out on the road to be with their officers. As we get younger officers, we just need them on the road more and just helping them train. So that's, I mean, besides everything that Adam said, that's why we're looking at that. Next subject on there is a speed trailer, uh, everybody knows what the speed trailer is, a trailer we park on the side of the road. Slow deter speeding vehicles, shows their current speed, has a radar in it. It purchased in two thousand eight, it's doing good, the radar's working, but it's old, it's old, beat up, looks bad. We wanna either do a lot of fixing up or maybe even possibly replacing it. A new one costs twelve thousand, fifteen thousand in that area. Estimate fix it up twenty five hundred, so just something to think about.
How often is that on the road?
We put it on the problem areas, um, where people are calling to complain about speeding vehicles. Four hundred west, it's out there a lot, two hundred south, uh, four hundred east, uh. And it goes out, it goes out until the batteries go out and then we bring it back and charge up the batteries and go from there.
Is it used half the year or is it used required here?
Oh, I would say. We can't put it out during winter because snow, I mean, that's our main concern is during the snowstorms. But we try to get it out a week, a month at least.
Orlando, I think our, the new message boards that we got for Public Works, you can actually get a, uh, a, uh, laser or whatever you call those things.
Yeah.
And they can be used for both, will that be a possibility? Because we don't always use ours all the time and.
Oh, we, we would love anything to deter, slow down traffic, I mean, that's probably our number one complaint coming to the police department, speeding vehicles, so.
Two, and then when we're using it at a, at a, you know, construction site, we'll be out of service, but the rest of the time we can just be moving.
Oh, yeah, we would love to use it, we would.
Let me look at, uh, see what, uh, options we have there with that.
Those two on four hundred north?
Yeah.
Excellent. And you guys have already talked about it again, um, but it's obviously something fresh on the chief's mind, retention. Mayor, you've, you said experience, experience, uh, we don't have a lot of options here in Linden, um, patrol, investigation, S R O. The chief's really looking at, uh, more recruitment, more retaining officers, so trying to look for new projects. He's mentioned you guys before, the K nine, uh, getting a K nine for patrol, um, just a drug interdiction dog, uh, smell narcotics. Do on traffic stop, search warrants, and it's really a good P R thing. I can see it used in a school a lot, I love our officers there at the school, just being present. So if we have a K nine and it's, we don't wanna do a purpose dog, we don't want a dog that attacks, you know, trained to apprehend anything like that. We want strictly a narcotics dog, which they're friendly, wagtail, and just let the kids play with them. So I think it's a great P R, uh, thing and let, let the kids know, hey, the police are actively looking for drugs, stay away from drugs.
What happened to the one we had, Capola?
Yeah, what's his name?
I do not know, I, that was before my time.
And, uh, we actually had a, we had a biting incident with that dog.
Like the open house in the public safety building of all places?
So, uh, it actually, it was the handler's nephew. So yeah, it's family there around and and lots of people around, lots of energy because of that whole day and, um, yeah, it actually bit, bit that little boy, so. And we got rid of it very soon thereafter, so. And then that officer actually retired and went, or went to U T U, actually, um, and transferred agencies there, so. Yeah, this, this is a topic of discussion, not something we're asking to decide on tonight, we'll, we'll just.
Like to do anything we can to have a presence in the school and starting to get those, develop those relationships and creating good citizens. And and a love of the police department, not a.
I agree, I agree one hundred percent, so I think it's a great P R tool for sure. The costs are in the paperwork, if you you want to review that, and also the motorcycle program. Just give the officers another thing to look at, obviously, the benefits the city would get is easier traffic enforcement, pull people over, um, you can hide on State Street, you can get out on State Street. You can patrol the trails and stuff like that, uh, get to emergencies quicker, um, but just something to consider. You guys are doing a great job on retention as far as the wage consideration, I won't go over that. But I will tell you, our officers are constantly getting offered jobs. There is recruitment out there, cities are saying, hey, you get someone over here, we'll pay you this much to get a transfer over here. So they are constantly being asked to go places. We've got a great environment here, thanks to you guys, um, but they are getting recruited, so. And to give you a ballpark, uh, Officer Jameson, we gave him a job in January. He gets out of the academy the end of April, he'll train with one of our guys until at least the end of August. And then we'll keep him on day shift where he can be watched till probably the new year. And then at that time, a year before, uh, he knows what he's doing. So it does take a lot to replace these guys and there's a lot of liability during that time. And that's why I wanna get my sergeants out there a lot more, um, which that will help. The other, uh, equipment, training needs, we're not asking for, uh, budget increase, anything like that, uh, we think we can get by with what was approved last year. And so that's all we got, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you're doing.
The last item there, uh, on, on just departments is our facilities. Uh, we included just some spreadsheet excerpts there that show Alex Roy Lance, our facilities and fleet manager, put these numbers together as estimates of some projects and things that, that may come up as proposals in the budget. These, these look like big numbers, but this is less than in prior years, we're, we're doing really well, updating facilities and keeping things, uh, in good shape. And he's, he's done a great job, um, on various facility maintenance projects. So that's just an F Y I, we'll refine that as we move forward in the budget. What other specific needs or issues do U S council members have that we haven't thrown at you tonight, so? Any, any projects, community buzz, concerns, issues that budgetary wise that we can?
I talked to.
Plan for.
Probably back in January. And he had mentioned that, uh, some time ago, maybe after the last parks in the past, there was a survey that went out, what, you know, what do the citizens want in their parks and rec environments? I think COVID changed a lot, right? COVID, everybody sucked in, mountain bike sales went crazy, pickleball went crazy, R V sales went crazy. And then people found out, oh, I don't like mountain bikes, right? I I just think we're at a different age now, COVID really changed people, or could have, maybe it's not as much. But do we wanna send out another one of those surveys? We've got our new Parks and Recs money, is it worth understanding more what people are looking for? I saw it in, you know, a lot of this playground equipment here and there, not that I object to or anything, I just thought, what, what is it that people want? Is that something that really liking, how do we, how do we know?
The two things that have been coming up most continue to be roads. And this would probably be a personnel thing, so it could be a larger, but like code enforcement, someone that could go around and there's a lot of rules on the books. For how things should be in the community, but enforcement's been tricky, so I've heard people asking for that.
When you say that, are you talking about parking on the streets, overgrown yards, what?
All of the above.
Okay.
And you may not know, we have a part time code enforcement, um, personnel, yep, and so he's, he's working on things.
Great.
Yeah, and so, um, but some of that's, we've had, had interns do that some years, years ago. We've had just our staff do it and be more reactionary, um, when we are lower staffed. But a few years ago, we created that newer part time position, so. Uh, if you see things specifically or you hear of things from residents of, hey, somebody was asking him whatever about this fence on that property, you know, please pass.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
How do you feel about that, um, text my gov system service in cases like this? Is it, are you welcome to that feedback? Is this a place where they could use that?
Yeah, that, that would certainly.
My gov is for anything city, city related, just have to get the word out there.
And something, speaking to that, I think we could, this would be the year of the centennial, but also with the Temple Company coming in early twenty twenty five, you know, we'll have a lot of visitors coming for the open house. This would be a fantastic year to really, to encourage people to have some community pride, right? Have the city maybe help step up and get people to compliance, State Street looking better. You can see some things are happening there, finding a couple of key places, but just get everyone more involved and excited to show our city in its best light, be a vacation. Great.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions?
I was just gonna bring up the, uh, Placer A I software, so we did a demo about a month ago. Pretty in, interesting, uh, artificial intelligence platform, um, some cities are using, Adam's hometown uses it. It's something that can be a useful tool to, basically, all of us are filmed. Um, it's something that can be a useful tool to basically all of us, our phones are being tracked. So it can identify where you went, you're, you know, it's anonymous supposedly. They're not tracking the person, but they're tracking individuals. And you can pull all kinds of data reporting with your economic development, like who's going shopping where? And when they come in the city to a Linden Days event, or where are they going to eat afterwards? Where are they going to shop? Uh, what places are they going to? Where, where do you maybe have leakage? Um, Parks and Rec can see the, are the attendees residents versus non-residents? There's all kinds of uh, unimaginable reports you can pull just to sort of determine how you're serving your residents well or not well, or what you wanna maybe try to target and develop as better amenities or economic development. And so uh, Mike Florence mentioned he has about twenty thousand that he's gonna roll from the last fiscal budget for seven hundred north studies and uh, planning. And he's willing to, um, the, the salesperson offered us an introductory rate of fifteen thousand for one year. Normally they charge more, it's based on your population and they lock you in for three years or whatever. But they were willing to let us do a trial. So Mike was saying he was interested, he could allocate from his budget, half of it. I don't know if he could be interested in.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'd love to know all those demographics.
But talking about trying to get data, just, you know, to, to make decisions, good decisions in all areas, it could be a really interesting tool to explore and so.
So if you skates, the individual itself, so you never really know the individual itself. But you would have something like, we know that your pickleball courts are used this much of the time and the people that are coming to play there are coming from Linden.
And where they're going throughout the day.
And where they, I mean, it's really detailed.
It's pretty impressive. I did a, a tour with them or a walk through their program and they pulled up specifically our Walmart. And we're able to pull up like salary ranges for the individuals that were going there, when they were most busy. I, I mean, it's, it's impressive, you know, when we talk about data-driven decisions, it's, it's impressive. Would we know what to do with all the data? It's a ton. But uh, yeah, I, I, I'm impressed.
Spanish work gave a demo of it and they, they've used it for two years now. And they have a, a really huge re- regional baseball, multiple diamonds that they have tournaments on. And they, they identified the days that they had this big tournament. And the data was able to show how many were Spanish work residents and where the other people came from within the county. And, yeah, and then it said, here's where they were before they came to this location. Here's how long they stayed. Here's where they went after. And within this many hours afterwards. And it would, I mean, it gave data like eighteen percent went to Costco, two percent went to Wendy's. I mean, there was, there was that level of information. And so what, what they kind of portrayed as, hey, Parks and Rec doesn't necessarily generate money on its own, but we had, you know, this data now to show that we got a sales tax bump from holding these tournaments. So.
So if it's based on cellphone, we wouldn't be able to use it as far as who's using what diving board in the pool, cause they don't have their cellphone.
Right. Probably. Yeah, they did exclude kids.
Sneak their phones out on sand.
It was very Big Brother feeling, but uh, it's all stuff that, what did you just say, Kristen? Whether we know it or not, or like it or not, it's, it's being data mined off of everything we do. So. Anyway. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Jacob, in favor.
Hi. Thanks, how you guys? This is a lot of data, a lot of information. Juan, you're a superhero man.
Well, just so you know, we have another two leads on Center Street right now on the old steel water line that we're replacing.
Well, good thing they fed you dinner.
You're good to go till five AM.
Jason Brown.
Did you find out who brought the sign down to?
Did you find out who wrote you your sign? I appreciate you letting that approach versus the other approach.
Those kinds of things make me so curious. We must have cameras.
Let's find them. Let's find the new getters.
I mean, I'll come down to Center Street and I have.
Yeah, I don't know.
Where was the bird? Oh, you said it was down, down at the other end of the boat building. Yeah, they got into the attic somehow and then, yeah, I don't know how there was no top plate on that wall, but. Yeah, we heard it flapping in around in there for hours. And uh, finally Alex is just like.
It was Dale Keefe.
Oh, good work. Hey, how are you? Hey, how well do you know the Fat Cats guys?
They're already, it's, they're already in it.
So I saw they put their corporate headquarters in Pleasant Grove.
They bought Graham trying to walk the freeway. I talked to him. I was like, you're a Linden CEO, you're a Linden resident.
Yeah, Dave Rutter, right?
Yeah. He's like, I love Linden, but St. John's, I don't know. I think they want the freeway.
Yeah, such a bummer.
And I know Castle would have been like, you forgot them all big time.
Yeah. I was talking to their CFO and he was like, oh, like come to Linden, like make it Linden. He's like, maybe you, I'll keep trying with them. He, he made it sound like the door was more open than it was. And then I called Eric and Eric's like, oh, it's, it's pretty locked. It's a bummer. It'll be good. Have you been to Fat Cats before? Really nice. Like the one out in Saratoga, really, really nice.
He's tripled. Just run it, just try it in the best way.
You get to drive in, you get to lay it back. Reviving. I assume I can throw them away.
Everybody say happy birthday to Mayor Lumber.